I'd like to call to order the public hearing for the Exeter School Board budget on Tuesday, January 10th at 6:03 PM. We will be reviewing the warrants that we are recommending for the ballot this March. And the first article is regarding the operating budget, and Heather will be reviewing that.
Great, so I'll start by reading Article Number One, Operating Budget. Shall the Exeter School District raise and appropriate as an operating budget not including appropriations by special warrant articles and other appropriations voted separately? The amount set forth on the budget posted with the warrant or is amended by vote of the first session for the purposes set forth therein totaling Should this article be defeated, the default budget shall be 23,27,129, which is the same as last year, with certain adjustments required by previous action of the Exeter School District or by law. Or the governing body may hold one special meeting in accordance with RSA 4013X and XB1 to take up the issue of a revised operating budget only. The school board recommends 23,374,631. And so I just want to just quickly speak to what is represented in the budget as an increase of about 2.2% or totaling $507,891. So in the, I guess the major changes I just want to point out are really in the categories of salary. So there's a change of $137,908, and that represents current level of salaries for teachers, our para salaries, and two additional permanent subs. That's both one at Main Street School and one at Lincoln Street School. The other is our health and dental insurance, and so that's an increase of $285,238. And that's just the, we have to budget for the 15.6% potential increase in the health insurance. So that's a fixed cost. And an increase in our special education contracted services, and that's due to a change in student need of $218,000. I just also want to point out at the same time that those are sort of some of the major increases, we have two significant decreases or reductions in the operating expenses for next year. One is the special education tuition. So that's a decrease of $109,000, that's also based on change in student need. And New Hampshire retirement, that's a decrease of $144,215, and that's due to a formula change. So again, the total change is 507,891, that represents a 2.2% increase. That does not include teacher contract negotiations, which I know Patrick is going to speak to in Article Two in just a moment. But those are, I think, the major changes.
Okay, thank you, Heather. Patrick O'Day will speak to Article Two regarding collective bargaining agreement.
Okay, Article Two says, "To see if the school district will vote to approve the cost items included in the collective bargaining agreement between the Exeter School District and the Exeter Education Association." And that's what most people think of as the teachers' union or the teachers' group at their school, which calls for the following increases in salaries and benefits at the current staffing level. So for 2024, it's 401,587. For 2025, it's 387,665. And for 2026, it's 417,633. And further to raise and appropriate $401,587 for the current fiscal year, such sum representing the additional cost attributable to the increase in salaries and benefits required by the new agreement over those that would be paid at current staffing levels. The school board recommends that the school district approve these costs and make the appropriation of $401,587. So in terms of collective bargaining, so we met, the board met through its representatives with the Exeter Education Association over a number of meetings and really negotiated a really good agreement that addresses a lot of needs that the teachers had raised from some operating things that don't have a cost implication. A lot of them don't have cost implications per se, but they're a big part of the agreement and a big part of the contract and a big part of what we spent our time focusing on, on how to improve the daily sort of practice here at the school to make things better for students, make things better for staff and teachers so that it, you know, meets the needs better. And then a piece of it also is the salary and benefits part. And if you look at those numbers to give a reference, they represent a 3% increase this year. Next year it would be a 2% increase, and the following year would be a 2.25% increase, which is very reasonable in my estimation and I think in the board's estimation, given particularly the, you know, current cost of living and whatnot, that, you know, it's, you can see it ends up being a pretty flat increase in terms of the dollar impact over the next three years. But given, given the whole package of benefits and change of the environment, we felt like it was a really appropriate sort of agreement to come to. So it was one that the board approved earlier on, but it would still need approval of the voters in terms of allocating the funds to bring it into action.
Okay, I'm going to cover Article Three, which is under Other. Shall the Exeter School District, if, shall Exeter School District, if Article Two is defeated, authorize the governing body to call one special meeting at its option to address Article Cost Items Only? This is pretty self-explanatory, it's only if Article Two does not pass. And Susan will review Article Four, Special Education Expendable Trust.
So Article Four reads, "To see if the school district will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of up to $75,000 to be placed in the Special Education Expendable Trust Fund, previously established for the unanticipated special education costs at the Exeter Elementary School. This sum to come from June 30th fund balance available for transfer on July 1st. No additional amount to be raised from the taxation. The Exeter School Board recommends this appropriation, and a majority vote is required." So just to clarify that language, it's that we've put this money aside in case we have an out-of-district placement or something that is a huge unexpected special education expense. And again, the money comes from surplus of funds, no additional tax cost to taxpayers during time.
Patty, can I just add one thing onto that? Susan did a great job of explaining it, but one of the things just for folks at home, make sure they understand is that the majority of the money that we, if we have a surplus at the end of the year, most of that is returned to taxpayers. And we've had times where we've had, you know, $500,000 or more, and we tend to return, you know, almost all of it to the taxpayers to try to reduce the tax rate for future years. But this is a relatively small amount that would offset something that if it came up during the middle of the year, that all of a sudden we were $75,000, $100,000, $200,000 short. We can't anticipate that we're going to have a surplus in that year, so it would mean that we would have to cut in some other, in some other way. You may have to cut staff or cut a program or cut something else. And we want to avoid being in that position, and that this surplus fund just helps make sure that that's less likely to happen.
Okay, are there any comments from the public? Seeing that there's no one from the public here, I will be closing the public meeting, the public hearing at 6:13 PM. Just to clarify, I'm Patty Sarette, filling in for Dawn Bolins tonight, she was unable to be here. I'd like to call to order the Exeter School Board meeting Tuesday, January 10th, 2023 at 6:15 PM. We'll start with Pledge of Allegiance. So the second item on the agenda is to open up discussion regarding the budget to see if there's any more discussion the board would like to have regarding the budget and the warrant articles.
So this is the time the board would decide if they wanted to make any changes to the budget based on public input. Since there was none, our, the board recommends all the warrant articles as presented. So you would probably look for a motion to approve the budget as presented. And that's, we'll then go to the later session for more feedback from the public.
Okay, so I would like a motion to adopt the FY '24 budget as presented. Susan?
I'd move to approve, so move, whatever.
Okay, and I, all those in favor?
Any discussion?
What?
There's a second from, yeah, from Heather, just asking for any discussion.
Is there any discussion? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, at this time, we will start a timer for 30 minutes. If anyone from the public comes in, we will allow them to provide us questions or input within the 30-minute timeframe. Next on the agenda, this is like a speed date, I'm really fast. All right, so it's the PTO update. Margaret Langkamp is here to update us, thank you for coming.
I don't even know if this is necessary, but myself, Margaret Langkamp and Joy Tobin were voted in as PTO co-presidents of Exeter Elementary School at the beginning of, the end of October, I should say. So I want to mention, we held a couple fundraisers this year. One of them was the, we did these mini photo shoots down at Spade Parkway at the end of September. I think they went really well, I, my daughter was one of the little subjects. And the photographers generously donated a percentage of the proceeds from each shoot to the PTO. We ended up raising around $1,500 from that over one weekend. Also held the very popular Square One Art fundraiser, and that, I just received a check for $2,072. I believe we have more money coming, but as of now, we've, we've raised over $2,000. And thanks to the art teachers at Lincoln and Main Street that really made this possible. Right now, we are running a smaller fundraiser. It is in collaboration with Bray, New Hampshire, which is a lung health organization. They put out a coupon book every year that has over 100 attractions to, coupons to attractions all over New England. Right now, I think they have over 100, including some of the ski areas and story land. This year, we are selling them for $40 each, and again, we get a percentage of the proceeds. And as far as expenditures, it's really exciting that students are going on field trips now for the first time, kind of, I know we're still in COVID, but in the new reality. So at the beginning of the school year, we paid around $10,000 to cover the expense of the bus, the school buses for all those trips. We also donated $1,000 in total for new resourced equipment, that was $500 per school. Another thing I wanted to note is that we don't, we reimburse teachers up to $125 for the out-of-pocket purchases they make. We increased it from $100 last year. So I'd say at least 69 or 78 teachers and staff people participate in that, it could be higher. I wrote a lot of checks, I can tell you that, which was great, because again, this is money they're spending out of their own pockets, so it's nice that we can reimburse them for that. The other thing I wanted to mention is that Get Fit in May, our annual fundraiser, our biggest fundraiser, is scheduled for Saturday, May 20th, 9:30 AM. Adults must register by April 21st to receive a free T-shirt. Children automatically receive a free T-shirt regardless of when they register. It's $30 to register for the 5K, $10 for students. Also, students can participate in the 5K with their families, or they can participate in a fun run. I believe it's a half mile for the middles, the Main Street schoolers, and then a mile for the Lincoln Street schoolers. It's a lot of fun, and I believe this is our 25th anniversary this year, so it's going to be a big one. Are there any questions?
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Next on the agenda, we have the SAU 16 Administrative Update, Esther Asbaum, Associate Superintendent. Thanks. At the SAU, we've just been doing budgets, budgets, and more budgets. So that's what's been going on there, along with personnel and those kinds of things. But I really would like to take this time to welcome Andres to the mic because he is following up on some questions that the board sent him, I believe it was in November. And we didn't have an official board meeting in December, so he's here to answer those questions and take any of the additional questions you may have.
Hola, everyone. Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
Yeah, thank you. It's good. I'll talk, I'll talk loud into it. Gracias. All right, so I'm here to answer the questions that I received from the board.
Andres, could you state your capacity within our leadership?
Andres Mejia, pronouns are he/him/his, and I'm the Director of Diversity, Equity, Inclusion, and Justice for SAU 16.
Thank you.
Thank you. So I, there was a lot of questions I typed in responses, I'll be reading from a paper. Do you want me to read the questions, do you already have those questions, or should I read them?
Should read the questions.
All right. So the question number one, "Has Andres been asked to be involved with decisions around curriculum materials used, especially with a view to making sure materials are inclusive and respectful to marginalized racial and ethnic groups? And has that been part of my role so far, and can it be?" So my response is yes, I have been asked by Lincoln and Main Curriculum Coordinators to look over material and curriculum with them to make sure it's inclusive in representation of the stories that we tell in the classrooms. And then also just available as a resource and thought partner in the work. So whenever a teacher or curriculum, anyone has questions, who wants to make their material more inclusive, then they contact me, I'll come on over. And also a reminder that the district currently uses the seven forms of biases to guide them. And it's something that is being practiced right now in the schools. And also when new staff come on, they go through the PD, learning the seven forms of bias in your district. The second question is, "What are the DIJ goals the central office is focusing on for the elementary school, and how are they measuring progress? Where is the focus currently, and where are the gaps, and what additional support is needed?" Andres can't do it all. I agree. We currently don't have any district goals for each of the schools. I know that the DIJ committee for your district, the Exeter schools, do have goals they're currently working on, and those are professional development, communication, school culture, and curriculum. The Exeter School District is moving forward and doing great work with DIJ efforts, including Abby, Tanya, Ryan, the rest of the DIJ committee are involved in that work. And I fully support their work. And again, I'm a resource to them to provide guidance, support, and my expertise in that. The SAU-wide DIJ committee, which is, represents one or two people from each of the DIJ committees in each of the schools, is currently working on, we started meeting, and we're meeting monthly, and we're looking at DIJ strategies and goals for the district-wide, SAU-16-wide. So that's what we're doing right now, and hopefully that will support our work moving forward. And when we're doing work in the schools, you know, if we're like, why are we doing this work? We can look at these district, SAU-wide goals for that. What kind of resources or support does Andres need from colleagues, parents, and students? I believe colleagues and caregivers are doing a great job when it comes to supporting DIJ efforts. And I hope that more admin, teachers, and caregivers would open their hearts and minds to DIJ work we are doing in the district, understand that the work we are doing benefits all children and families. So yes, we have a lot of people involved, and we can always have more people, you know, that support the work for, for all the students in our schools. The next question is, "What can parents do to support this work? What kind of language are the teachers being trained in? And is there a way for us to access some of this material so we can use it at home as well?" Parents and caregivers should talk to their children at home about the importance of accepting and respecting their fellow classmates for their differences. There have been multiple professional development opportunities for Exeter School District educators. And then Abby, Tanya, and Ryan have updated in past board meetings on those topics. I also believe that the board will be inviting, the board will be invited to the March PD to learn what the teachers are also learning. Number five, I think it would be helpful to get better understanding of the kinds of requests that Andres is responding to on a regular basis for context and for deeper understanding of why Andres' work is so important. So I respond to multiple requests across the SAU. Some of that can look like bias and discrimination incidents, working with the initiator and the affected, providing support and guidance to principals around incidents of discrimination, supporting DIJ committees, what they are working on on their schools, like PDs, or helping them with vision statements. And then working directly with caregivers and supporting them on how they can support their children. So that's, those are some parts of, of my role in the district. The sixth, question number six was respecting the privacy of the individuals involved, especially kids. It's paramount, but I would bet that most parents in the district have no idea of the issues Andres sees on a constant basis. Is there any way to present this material as part of the larger community efforts to understand the work? So the ADTF, Anti-Discrimination Task Force, is currently working on drafting up some recommended protocols for reporting bias and discrimination incidents. The hope is that with these protocols, we cannot only handle the incidents appropriately, but also a way to report and capture data of what is happening in our districts. Also Alma is like something that we've been using in our districts and, and doing in a lot of schools today. It now allows us to report, to tag things appropriately and report the incidents. Hopefully, we can use Alma to, to pull that data. As of now, what I've been doing since I started this row, I've been collecting data by taking notes, notebooks, meeting logs, getting that information because from caregivers, students, teachers, and principals when they reach out when an incident occurs. In the elementary school, most of the incidents I encounter have to do with racism. I'm not saying that that's the only issue that there are in the, that there is in the elementary schools. I just believe that because of my identity that I hold, people are reaching out when these things happen because there's, you know, they, they might feel like they don't have no one else to talk to about racism. But I know for sure there's other incidents happening that touch other identities. And the schools are handling it the way that they, you know, I mentioned that ADTF has a recommended protocol, but the schools are also dealing with incidents in the way that they deal with them, and we're working on that to make sure that we're dealing with incidents appropriately. Number seven, are we currently focusing on accessibility as part of the DIJ work in our district? Should we formally shift our focus to DEIJA? I'd like to see efforts in our district to move beyond the accommodations that are provided under the ADA or IDEA laws and practically build accessibility into the structures of our schools. Is there currently work being done to normalize disability? So my response is, I use an intersectional lens when I talk about DIJ in our schools. I believe we can't focus on one historically marginalized identity and not see or focus on all the other elements of that identity. Accessibility is certainly one of those elements. I hope that when we look at the work on diversity, equity, inclusion, and justice, we are thinking of all students and their different identities. I work closely with the SAU Director and Assistant Director of Student Services on making sure we are intersectional in our support and policies. Exeter does have two positions dedicated to accessibility for all kids in our buildings. And then the work we're focusing on now with educators is on our own implicit biases. Because when we start to understand that, we then get to start to understand how we see other identities, how we respond to other identities that maybe we don't hold. And even if we do hold those identities, what internalize biases or oppression we do hold in ourselves and still true to other identities. And then the last question I got, question number eight, "Was there training and discussions around the incident that happened on the bus with a student of color? Do administrators understand that when a student of color is wrongly accused, that the fallout and repercussions are much different than the same happens to a white student? Have you been open to looking through that lens?" Yes, I, when the incident did happen, I did meet with admin and the family and the students and still supporting the admin and the family and the students for these kinds of incidents. And I'm, yeah, we'll continue to do it, you know, it could look different for every incident. And I do agree that you do handle things differently, you know, because people have different barriers and walls because of the systems that we all work in, study in, learn in, and live in. So yeah, thank you. That's all my answers for this, and then you don't have any other questions?
Thank you so much. I was happy to learn that some of our PD around DEI has become a requirement versus an option over the last couple of years, which is great. Is it currently optional for our schools to engage with you in general? Or is, is there a protocol in place if an incident arises on the bus in the school? There's a clear path for administrators to take, and that includes you somewhere along the way? Is there now a plan in place to handle situations like that?
There, there is no plan yet, hopefully with the recommendations from the ADTF. And I know some districts and committees are working on protocols now that will be included and talking about those protocols. Hopefully, that is a part of that protocol. They do contact whoever's the director of DEIJ to, to be part of that. And, and I know it seems like, it might seem excessive to always invite the DIJ director to make sure they're part of all these incidents, because there are incidents that happen. It's just someone's coming into a community with that lens, spending their time, and they're building that expertise to be able to help systems deal with those situations. I would hope that that would be part of the protocol. And we'll see what, what comes out at the end of the ADTF.
Right, I agree. I, I think that it would be riskier not to involve you because we actually have you on our staff and our leadership team, so I'm hoping that that becomes a regular process in place at some point in the near future. There was one currently optional, I had one of the question, but it's, it's leaving me now. Does anyone else have any questions?
Just, I think we've gone over it in past meetings, but just for those who might be listening or not familiar, can you share again who is on the Anti-Discrimination Task Force? And I can't, I don't know if you mentioned also when you, like, what's the timeline for that process for the protocol? Or is it considered?
So let me see if I remember who's on the task force. We have, I believe, 14 people on the task force.
Oh, okay. Or maybe just like who it represents, you don't have to name everybody's names.
Yeah, so it represents some students from the high school, some teachers from the high school. It represents assistant principals from the high school, an assistant principal from the elementary school level, an assistant principal from the middle school level. Let's say parents, elementary school parents, high school parents, caregivers, and community partners. So representation from community partner as well. So that's kind of the, and we try to touch all the, within all those roles of caregiver, teacher, student, admins, we try to touch all the different districts and towns. It might be a student that represents a You know, it might be a student that represents a town or a thing, but we try to touch across. And, uh, hopefully by, uh, by the end of this year, um, uh, April or June, we'd be able to just have recommendations on protocols in the A D T F.
I have one other question while you're here. Later, we're going to be talking about some of the policies and I know in the policy committee, we spoke with Dr. Ryan recently about, we were using a tool, um, to sort of look at as we review policies, and I know this is something you all are doing in staff too, to, through an equity lens. And I wonder if you could speak just while you're here to sort of how you all are using that tool and the potential for that.
Yeah, so, um, the tool's being used just to provide guidance, you know? Sometimes when we look at things, we, we, we look at things through our perspective, our experiences, what we've learned and what we know. So the, the tool is just there to like, as a rubric or just prompts to just think about, uh, when you're creating a policy, who is, you know, who are we thinking of? Who is the centering and so on? So it's more of just a resource to use to just help you, uh, even your, when we're thinking and doing this work, especially in places where we're moving fast, you know, making decisions and so many different things are happening, to just use this resource to create those policies or edit them, you know? Yeah, so that's, that's what it's used for.
It's great. I can say that we used it in the last policy committee meeting and just having it to reference as we went through each policy, even though you all had done it, like done first pass, it was great to just have that to, to look at. So appreciate that you guys all brought that forward.
Um, one other thing, there was a comment about goals in the, somebody had asked a question about goals and it just made me think, um, I'm sure every department within our S A U has their own sub-goals, but I guess it's my hope that D E I goals are interwoven in our S A U goals, um, moving forward and our departments can work together to make sure they're using same language and being inclusive across all of their goals. And so I'm hoping that you're involved in those meetings.
Yeah, no, thank you. And then I think, uh, I think that's what we want to get, you know, and that's so we have the professional developments and we're sharing vocabulary, frameworks, and mottos so that we can get to a point where when we're, one day we might not need that resource or rubric to look at, it's just part of what we think of when we first. Even when we're thinking at a definite second, you know, like it's still ingrained in us to think that way. So I think that's what we're trying to get, right? That it is part of everyone's goals and we're working, we talk about it at the S A U level, um, on, on, on making sure that equity is part of every department, goals, actions.
Thank you so much for being here.
Thank you.
Okay, where do we go? Yep, the last part of our presentation, I turn over to Michelle for the financial
Good evening. In your package, we sent you where your financials stand at the moment. At the previous board meeting, we had remaining expense of one million, six hundred eighteen, nine hundred and thirty-six dollars. We had expenditures within the month of only forty-eight thousand, four hundred and eighty-eight, which basically consisted of payments for substitutes and mid-year stipends. Does anyone have any questions? We're talking where we have remaining expense at the moment of one million, five hundred
Does anyone have any questions? No? Thank you, Michelle.
You're welcome.
Okay, next on the agenda, um, we want to approve the meeting minutes for December sixth, twenty twenty-two, the public meeting minutes, as well as the non-public meeting minutes. Has everyone had a chance to review? Would you like to review them now? Are there any edits? I'd like to ask for a motion to approve both December sixth, twenty twenty-two, public and non-public meeting minutes.
I'll make that motion. So, so moved.
A second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
I.
I think Patty, I think you have to abstain, right? Because you weren't here for that.
Oh, yeah, sure.
Yeah.
Okay, um, next on the agenda is Tanya, Principal of Main Street School and team, your report and the STEAM presentation.
So I think I'll go and then Ryan will go and then we'll let our lovely STEAM teachers present afterwards. So the last time we had our board meeting, we talked about budget and data, so I have a couple of updates of just some cool things that have happened at the school that we didn't get a chance to talk about then. I'm glad that our P T O, one of our presidents was able to attend. We just met with her today actually to talk about some volunteering opportunities that we're going to be pushing out and ways that they can help grow their P T O. She's lovely, so we're excited to be working with them. They have a lot of good ideas. In December, we had at Main Street School, we ran a program, this is our second year, called Holiday Hope, where we set up a mock shop in our gym and we invited some families that we knew, um, might be in need or who are struggling to come and shop for their children and we ran gift wrapping stations, our staff came in and did that and we like are very conscientious about maintaining their dignity and privacy and doing all of that, but we helped over twenty-five families, which was awesome and just a really fun Saturday. Uh, we also, through our McKinney Vento grant, we were able to spend twenty-two hundred dollars with the assistance of Red Barn to help get sixty-six pairs of shoes. So we've got those stored and have been giving them out to some kiddos, so that was great. On November seventeenth, we had a super successful STEAM night, a lot of people turned out, so I'll let the, our ladies talk about that in a minute, but it was really cool and it's something that we're looking at having every year because it was, it was really awesome to see what they were able to put together. In, um, early December, there were a few of us from the S A U that met with community leaders and stakeholders that was put on by the Y M C A and we partnered on how we could unify our efforts to better serve the community. And a lot of good conversations came out of that and we were feeling like we're, we're all doing very similar things but separately and so it's like, how can we get together to, to do like an entire community picture? And it was awesome. And we had the chance to meet with the, um, director from Camp Lincoln and then also the gentleman, his name is Anthony, that helps run our Y M C A right here and then they do, um, Little River. And so we talked about how we could offer some scholarships and some funding sources for summer, so we've been tackling that because registration just opened, but it's just been kind of a nice partnership that we have with some of those folks over at the Y M C A. Um, we have some training going on. Right now, we just have a teacher at each grade level, but it's for U D L or Universal Design for Learning, which is, um, a philosophy, it's really interesting, actually, we would love to grow it, eventually all of our staff members would be trained. But it's really on helping educators learn how to present information, engage all students, and create inclusive and accessible learning tasks and experiences. And so it's really like looking at learning barriers and how you overcome those barriers in all areas of school. And so it's universal design and it's pretty exciting. And so we have, um, been working with a gentleman, free of cost, who comes out and he's working with some of our staff members and then they go and do observations and they talk about, um, what maybe could have been changed or done differently so that all students had an access point and there's, there's just some good stuff about that. So I hope to talk about that in years to come, really. Uh, right now, we're doing our universal academic diagnostics and so we expect to see a lot of growth and then we're going to figure out some good ways that we can share that information with families that makes sense and hopefully aligns with our report card system, so we're having lots of conversations about that. Tomorrow, we have, um, we've been working with P E A and we have a female step group coming over for our second graders and they're going to be talking about the history of step and doing a performance and then teaching a couple steps, so that's super cool for Martin Luther King Junior Week coming up. And, um, I'm going to, if we have an opportunity to talk about some more D I J updates, I'll let Abby go into it further, but we do have, um, we've been working with, uh, New Hampshire Listens on some community conversations just for our Exeter schools. And so on the calendar right now, we have February and May, and so it's to talk about some things like D I J and sort of justice and a bunch of other acronyms that maybe people in the community hear about. And so inviting them in so that we can go into more depth on that. So we have some cool things coming up. That's it for me. Thanks.
Thank you.
And then Brian will go next, Principal of Lincoln Street School.
Hello, everyone. Couple of updates from Lincoln Street. As Tanya had mentioned, we are excited to partner with P E A tomorrow. It will be our third grade students at Lincoln Street School that will have presentations through their Unified Arts, so it'll be during their art, music, P E, and library classes and the, um, the activities align to whatever that content is, um, in some way, shape, or form, um, to provide that, some sort of experience that focuses on togetherness, diversity, unity, unity, peace, historical connections, um, to Black history and culture today. And as Tanya mentioned, we're very excited about the step dance group coming up. Our teachers at Lincoln Street have started planning celebrations of learning for the spring with the following dates and focus. Um, third grade will be on March sixteenth with the, um, focus of change makers or influential people. Fourth grade, um, their celebration of learning will be on April eighteenth, which will be regions of the United States where they will focus on how does where you live impact how you live? And in fifth grade, on May thirty-first, um, the focus will be the American Revolution significant events and people that shaped, um, that time in history. All the times are five thirty to six thirty in the evening and we look forward to welcoming families. The first semester is coming to a close very soon. Teachers are working on their narratives as part of the Alma Progress Report that will be emailed home to families on January twenty-seventh, um, to parents and caregivers. Students are also taking their I Ready, um, diagnostic assessment, which is, was also given in the fall, which is a universal screener, um, for all students. Students also look to this, I'm sorry, uh, which will allow teachers to look at student growth as well as trends in the areas of math and reading. Winter I Ready scores will also be sent home with students on the twenty-seventh, but in backpacks, they'll be printed out in backpacks so parents can expect, um, an academic update in the form of a progress report via email and an I Ready mailed home in backpacks or sent home in backpacks. Administration at L S S will spend part of a day at the end of the month reviewing winter data, um, from I Ready and Acadiants, um, which is a benchmark used in Math Win to organize, support, and guide teachers through these conversations. So we're looking forward to looking at these new data points. We've had our Math Win well in action at this point, they're halfway through their third cycle, and so we're really interested, interested to see the areas of growth, the trends, and how that's going to impact instruction, groupings, et cetera, as we move into the second half of the year. And just a couple final things to wrap this up. In early February, Lincoln Street School will welcome administration and guidance from the Cooperative Middle School as they introduce themselves to fifth grade students during lunch and recess and also observe our Math Win model. We have three dates that C M S will meet with fifth graders coming up, um, again in February. And in very exciting news, just to wrap this up, um, we actually have filled all of our permanent sub-rolls at Lincoln Street. Our most recent hire started on Monday and, um, while we're still kind of getting everybody oriented, um, very soon, we think that that will be just a very, very pleasant thing. So thank you very much for the support, um, for these, uh, positions that have been budgeted for. And with that said, I'm going to turn, um, the mic over to two very talented STEAM teachers, um, Jackie Carlosi from Main Street and China Haney from Lincoln Street School.
Ryan, can I ask you a question before you do that?
Absolutely.
Which is just, um, so I was curious about that, you said that there's two different ways that the sort of narrative reports and the I Ready scores get sent home to families. Why, why is that? Why do we do two different ways? One electronically and one, uh, paper version in backpacks?
Um, I don't know if there's, I can look into this for you, but I don't know if I Ready necessarily has, you know, Alma is our communication, right? So it's very simple to upload the reports, email them home, it's just, it's ready-made for it. I Ready, I don't think that we have the, the same abilities on the platform, so it gets printed out. And I Ready also has like a family report, like a single-page family report that is very easy to read, but, and, and so it's not, you know, for example, the progress report, you kind of file through quite a few pages. The I Ready reports are pretty concise.
Okay.
But I can, I can look into whether there's the capacity for an I Ready email.
Well, if it's desirable to do it electronically, you know, to have both go out electronically, it doesn't sound like it's an issue of access to the electronic, you know?
Correct.
Medium or something like that. If there's a way to do it, I know Alma is developing, it may not be something that we do this year, but maybe it's something we can talk to the folks about as a, something to look into for the future, if, if those two systems can talk together.
Absolutely.
I don't know if they can, but.
It's worth looking into.
Yeah.
This is a question maybe for both of you, just to that, to spark something in my head because I know last year there was some confusion, right? Where it was like, well, you know, I Ready is telling me this about my student in terms of their, and then the report card might not exactly align to that. So I'm wondering from a communication standpoint to families, how are we getting ahead of that, you know, in terms of how to read these two different data points on students, especially since they're coming out in.
The same time.
At the same time.
The same time in different forms, but the same date it sounds like.
And if not, maybe that's something to think about in terms of just, there was, I know some confusion, that was a point of feedback from parents.
Yeah, absolutely. I, I think one of the, the biggest points that we can do to just kind of get ahead or clarify is, is the difference between the two, whereas, you know, the first semester progress report is a kind of a synthesis of evidence that's been taken between September and early January, uh, whereas the diagnostic, uh, the I Ready is that snapshot at a point in time, you know? Maybe it was on a, a good day, maybe it wasn't on such a good day. I think I shared the anecdote of my son, the first time he took it in kindergarten, being all excited about it and then saying, I asked him why and he said, oh, I was the first one done. He kind of, he kind of missed the, missed the train on that one, but, um, but I, I do think that we can clarify kind of the purpose of it and, and what we're looking to get out of it in that, you know, it is one of many snapshots that we look at, you know? And, and while it not, doesn't provide the whole picture, just gives us one more piece that demonstrates, you know, that kind of that academic journey that their child is taking.
I think some kind of cover letter to that effect for both of you would be helpful to just.
Yeah, no, absolutely.
I think it's great to do.
Yeah, we do, we have a letter that goes out about I Ready that kind of talks about it just being like, it's one measure, one measure point or whatever, but I think that we did plan on doing it a little bit better this year and also trying to get them to be more aligned when they came out. And we've had a lot of discussions just about our Alma reports in, um, being a bit more calibrated in that like each person, each educator has like a common understanding of what that thing means. So like when they're going to mark that they're proficient, are we talking about proficient from a K to two scale or are we talking about from this moment in time there where they should be? So just this year, I think that, that educators have more clarity, so we want to be able to explain some of that too.
That's right.
Hopefully, hopefully it'll be better.
I think that's great.
I think so, just to build quickly on what Heather was saying, again, if it's not something that you feel you're in a good position to get out exactly what you want for the January report, it could be a future goal, but I think it makes sense to have something that maybe addresses both of those assessments because they both come out at the same time and I can see how that would lead to some confusion. There may be a piece with the one that says what this is and another piece over here, but if there's something that identifies them both in one document and sort of compare and contrast or talks about how they give different lenses on, on a student's abilities, achievements, proficiencies, whatever, you know, competencies, whatever you want to describe it, I think that could be really helpful. Yeah. Thank you.
Now to the fun stuff, right?
To put a face to a name, I'm China Haney, Lincoln Street STEAM teacher, this Jackie Carlosi over at Main Street. Thank you for taking this, allowing us to take this time out of the board meeting to discuss the first annual Exeter Elementary STEAM night. So we're going to walk you through, um, what STEAM night looked like if you didn't get a chance to come. Students and families had a chance, um, in the STEAM lab to take a picture with the green screen. We have some famous admin over there to your right that were our testes with their families. So the families actually got to pick their backing, um, and then they were sent home later the following week. In the cafeteria, we also had a station with the green team, they helped us out. Families were able to decorate a frame that they could take home with them to put the picture in later.
We had lots of stations throughout Main Street School where all of our Exeter Elementary School families could go. This was, um, kind of a dream in the making since two thousand and nineteen, at the birth of the STEAM program. So to be able to come back and do this after COVID and have it be for both Exeter Elementary School, Main Street, and Lincoln Street was really great and to be able to. And to be able to see all of the different families interacting. We have fifth graders helping kindergartners. And STEAM is just such a low-floor, high-ceiling activity in general that it really just goes both ways. This is a picture of the art room where they were doing acrylic paint for, which was super duper artistic. And I think it took about a week to dry, so it didn't make it until after Thanksgiving. The library is another space to be utilized. Knowing that STEAM night was going to be loud and boisterous, we wanted to have kind of a quiet, cool-down, calm-down space for our families, thinking about all the different kids and their needs. So this is where they could come and build with people plates, do paper and pencil puzzles, play some actual puzzles and do some jigsels, which are little jigsaw puzzle pieces shaped like pixels. So it was kind of like a nice cool-down area, keeping in mind like all of our families and that it can be really stimulating and having a space where they could still enjoy STEAM night.
And as we flowed through the families through Main Street, we had bulletin boards that were interactive. So we took the different levels from your K students to your fifth graders. We had two crack the code bulletin boards, which were math engagement. So we had the different levels of math there. Students were able to, if you look here where it says STEAM, those were actually mazes. So there was different building mazes as well. We had some coloring. We also had some pixel art. So as they walked from the entrance to the gym, they were able to work with these with their families. It was just interesting, I was talking to some of the teachers that were in that space, that how the kids were, you know, like, mom, do this, mom, do this, no, try this. You know, that engagement piece, which is what we wanted. We also had bulletin boards of what scientists looked like. So students were able to make connections of this is what scientists look like. And there's a variety of what they would think a scientist looks like. And they were making connections with their own selves.
So this was the back corner of the gym. We had lots of different activities. We really tried to steer away from anything that was screen-related. We wanted, for the most part, for this to be a screen-free event. With that in mind, you will see that there were computers at the bottom. That is connected to the making-naky. So we took our making-naky, plugged it into bananas and Play-Doh, and the families were playing the piano on the bananas. And they were getting to see that really cool connection. But with the exception of that, we were a screen-free event. Really just making sure that families were interacting. We have everything from SnapCircus where they were scoring light and sound. We have our Green Team Makers Space Table where they can make, hold the math facts family bracelet up to 20. So they can work on their math facts as well as their green teams recycle part of our frame. We also have the geometric walking straw station, which is where they use straws to build a 3D geometrical shape. And then we attached a servo backpack to it and a little leg, and the straws went for a walk. It was really cool for the kids to see.
STEAM night would have not been able to be so successful without our volunteers. So we had staff volunteers from Main Street and Lincoln Street. They are at the event, but also just the organization of it. We also had Exeter High School students and the S S T students come and help out. The Exeter High School students graciously volunteered and they were, I think we had one at the station, right? And in the art room, you know, kids looked at them as role models and they were just totally smiling as well. And with S S T, Noir brought his robotics, as you can see in some of the photos, his robotic arm, and then brought the robots as well and his, a few of his students to work those programs.
And one thing to add about what Noir brought from the S S T, those were all projects that his students have been working on. And they told the family that, which made the kids even more excited because they were like, wait, who does? This was another corner of the gym that we have stations in. In the top right corner, you can see a low-floor activity, which would just be a marble maze run. And the back corner of that top right photo is a Turing pumbo machine. So that is actually teaching you how an actual computer works based off of the work of Alan Turing. In the bottom, you see the GeoBoards, which are always super popular with the rubber bands. They're trying different shapes, making penguins, you name it. In the middle photos, they are doing a screen-based robot. It also does, it's an arc robot. They just look up and down and make circles around the table. And then on the left side, you have our Lego art. This was a community art piece. Keeping in mind that not everybody will be able to come to STEAM night, the kids have an opportunity that we during STEAM had a few of the little Lego pieces to the board. And then after STEAM night, it was completed, we assembled it. It's actually three by three, even though it's like one big piece on that bottom lower left, but it's actually three by three pieces put together. And that's on display at Main Street School because it's a community art piece. And then at Lincoln Street School, they're currently finishing their Starry Night Pixel Lozenge, which was also available at STEAM night. And if kids weren't able to go, they can still stick it on, so it's cool.
Going down back to the bulletin boards, the interactive bulletin boards, that hallway also had directional coding, so on the wall. So kids would code their way to the dance party. Inside the dance party, we had music, the strobe lights. And then if you look here on the top left, it congratulates them. But it also has the dance codes that they can complete within that dance party area. I heard a little bit of it. I think the teacher that was in there wrote it too.
Also, in the hallway outside of the gym, we had more of an independent exploration station set up in the whole hallway. On the right-hand side, you can see students and families exploring steel drums. And there were posters about the math and music connection. In the middle, you can see the microscope mystery station where they would take some slides, put it under the microscope, practice even in and out, trying to guess what it was. And then on the left-hand side was our domino chain reaction. It had stunts and props. And a really fun connection to that, we had a poster about Lily Habesch, who is a New Hampshire resident. She's a young adult, I want to say in her early twenties, but the kids all know her because she's one of the most popular domino chain reaction tutors. If you don't know her, her company is called H5. And she's doing a lot for women and diversity and STEM. So look her up, add her to your shopping list. The kids love her.
Throughout the night at the MSS STEAM lab, we had the 3D printer going and it was a mystery item that was being printed. And students were able to guess what it was. And can you guys guess for us? Yeah, yeah. And then we had Stella and Ben as our learners.
We really like to practice with people each. And what we're always talking about with the kids is the engineering design process. And one of the later steps of that is always to reflect and improve. So right after the night was over, we sent out, like within 20 minutes, a survey to families with two simple questions. The first one was, would you return to STEAM night? And they could rate it from a one to 10, 10 being absolutely, one being like, no, no, never contact me again. And then we had an option.
No.
And then we had an option at the bottom where they can leave feedback. But that part was just optional. And we got a lot of great positive feedback. Families really want to see more of this. They really appreciated that it was an Exeter Elementary event and it wasn't just Main Street or Lincoln Street because they could see how their littles and their aunts were interacting. And it was really nice for the family just to do one and see it all together. So I guess I'll give you a minute to reassemble that feedback. That's just, we got a lot of feedback. We were very impressed with the level of feedback we got. But maybe a minute to just give you a second to glimpse that over. And then we'll go into our, our room for improvement and our plans for next year. And we have some packets if you want to closer look. So on to next year. This is more reflection and more thinking about improvements. One of the pieces of feedback we saw from families was that sometimes in certain places, like moving to the art room, moving in to get their green screen family photo, it felt crowded and the flow was a little tight. So we were talking about having Lincoln Street School hostess here because they have a separate gym and cafeteria space, which would allow for a better flow. The only other piece of feedback we got that was related to what we could improve on was the fact that it was hot in the school. So we kind of thought about maybe that's flow-related, a lot of bodies chemistry. But we were also thinking, yeah, we were also thinking if we move into a spring event, that that would allow for maybe some cooler air flows, but would also allow us to have some outside stations on the hardtop. We didn't feel like we were able to represent the sciences as well as we wanted to, but that can be really hard in an indoor space. So being able to do some of our stations outside would open up for some messy chemistry like elephant toothpaste, maybe even some tie dye. Or we can spread out and be a little less concerned about some of those messy indoor applications. And then going along with the idea of the spring event, we also know that a lot of people who volunteered to help us, both high schoolers and staff, they got sick right around that week. It was a really popular week for the flu and all sorts of other things. So we're thinking that the spring can be a bit of a healthier time. So we're just being cognizant of that.
And then we're going to also continue our outreach with Exeter High School and S S T, but also opening up to like the U N H Chemistry Club and having them come and doing some experiments with the kids. Also, the shipyard has an outreach program, STEAM outreach program. And I just talked to Libby last week about having them come and bringing their robotics as well. And then also maybe even having the local scout troops to do that as well, to come and do some flight down, you know, airplanes or bottle rockets or something like that. So using our local organizations to be part of this. To keep it fresh every year, we are looking to, you know, maybe just doing a themed event. So each year, it's themed, and each year will be Spex or Vop.
And before we open it to any questions or comments, we did just want to say again that even though you only see two of us standing here, this was a whole community event. We had people helping us behind the scenes, laminating things, printing out gigantic posters. Staff and people volunteering night out to help run stations, cleaning up after the back taping. So it was definitely teamwork makes the dream work. That's something we say all the time and, yeah. So it was, it was definitely a big community event. So even though you're just seeing two of us, it was a lot, a lot of people that made it.
Squad.
Yeah. Yes. And hopefully everybody's sure.
Oh, yes, and that was one more piece of feedback. If we could have been more coordinated, so like all of the volunteers, they were thinking like fluorescent, padded shirts, so.
How many, how many people do you?
Yes.
How many people are the US making?
I'm like hundreds.
Hundreds. First of all, this is awesome. And two questions. Can you remind us how often students get to work?
Yeah.
During.
I just asked you to ask the question with the mic, so.
Yes, sorry. Come back. I was so excited.
Can you remind us how often students get to work with each of you during the week? Typically, like outside of this event?
Yeah, so they see us every week for one session.
Okay, that's great. And then on the, on the, on the packedness of it, I wonder, have you guys, and this goes for like parent nights too. Have you guys ever thought to stagger, like the, like give people times or something? Because I know that that happened too with the parent night at Main Street School where we were all packed in there, you know? I just wonder, both for health reasons, but also just for like their ability to engage, if that is my consider. I think this is awesome though.
Just like to take the opportunity first to say thank you for all your efforts and your complete squad, as, as well as to thank the board for over the past few years making the two full-time STEAM positions and putting them in the budget and supporting those. So thank you to the board also.
That's so cool.
Okay, next on the agenda is the committee reports. I know that our first is the D E I J. Our meeting was postponed and to be determined when we'll reschedule that. Okay, any other updates, Abby?
We had another meeting since then, the two, Susan went to, Susan.
I did, yeah.
The one in December.
You go ahead. Do you have? Oh, okay, well, a lot of, I love different notes, but I didn't know I was speaking. But I, Patrick was on it. He had a conflict, so I went in his place and it was great. It's a great group. The, they discussed protocols, some examples, looked at a Loudoun County in. Virginia? And a program that they're, and how they're using and working with D E I J. And talked about protocols. We broke into small committees. And our group talked about physical space, a group that I was with. And we talked about the environment within the school, doing walkabouts for everyone to walk about, new staff trainings, cross-cultural norms. So, oh, and talked about virtual tours, which I thought was kind of a cool thing. Artists in residence using P E A and the S O program. The STEAM night, we brought in, to discussion the STEAM night. I guess, do you want to?
No, I think you, I wasn't going to say much because honestly, the principles kind of.
Yeah.
You want that, you're sorry, like it's embedded in everything we're doing. So they talked a lot about it already, but I think the STEAM presentation was a great example. And I'm hoping after you had your minds thinking about what Andreas was talking about too, you were able to notice lots of things that are evident now. As he mentioned, like as the hearts and minds of our educators are growing and we're growing in this work, I think you can see it showing up in more and more spaces. So I think that's really nice. The only thing I was going to say was about P E A, which you stole. And then community conversations we've been working on. And it is February 9th and May 18th. And the only thing I would say is we're going to, the flyers should be done like in the next week or so to start sending out. But it'd be great if any of you want to come and sit at the tables because we'll have educators there.
What, what time of day are you?
Like six to eight, probably. We're still, yeah, we're still deciding the exact time. So don't like quote me on that, but it's going to be, February 9th is the first one.
Okay.
Around six to 18.
Okay.
There'll be small tables set out. If you went to any of the ones at the high school, it's going to be very similar to that. We're hoping to have one or two educators at each table. And then it'd be great to kind of disperse board members too and then other community members as well and just to have a conversation about D E I J and what that looks like.
And this is just for Exeter?
Yeah, yeah. So really, we saw what would, what happened at the high school and it was so exciting. And we thought we want to bring that home, right? So we want to replicate that.
Is that something you're leading or is Andreas leading?
So the, our D E I J committee at Exeter has been working on this as part of our professional development actions. We've leaned on Andreas because we learned about the idea from him, participating in doing it with the S A U work. And he's helped connect us to New Hampshire Listens, who we're going to be partnering with to do this. He says he's going to come to the event, so that'll be really fun. So I'm expecting him to be there.
Great.
That's all.
That's great, thanks. I have one question related. Do we need, Abby, do we want us to tell you in advance if like, do you need us to let you know if we can make those nights? Or is it just show up? Like, would it be helpful for you to know if board members can come and how many? So that you can.
Yeah, that'd be great. So it will also be a registration link sent out for New Hampshire Listens. They'll handle registration for us, which will be great. But I would love it if you guys want to just.
Would you send that registration information to us as board members do?
Yeah.
Yeah, great.
I'll make sure it's.
Oh, great.
I was just going to skip to C, which is the superintendent evaluation. There is also no update on that. And then Patrick has, or Heather has updates on policy.
Take it away. We could tag you.
You're at the meeting too.
We can, we can do it together. You can start.
All right. There's, um. So there are several policies that we had a chance to go over at the last policy committee meeting. The first two both relate to vacancies on the board. So that there's a, there's a statute and some other practices related to that. If someone resigns or, you know, either if they move and they're not eligible or this decided that they can't continue with whatever reason with their position, either as a board member or as a district officer. But there's not, there hadn't been, at least in our policy, a lot of clarity. But there's not, there hadn't been, at least in our policy, a lot of clarity about, you know, what's the preferred process, sort of the protocols about that. So these policies provide more of that. So if you look at B, 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 C, it's a lot of Bs, the stuttering, I guess, or whatever, but it's the board member district officer resignation. This one has, it has a whole new component on here about how to tender resignation, the board acknowledgement, the effective date, the withdrawal of resignation, those sort of things. So it just provides some protocols about that. That's what all that new language is. There's a little bit of just fine tuning about, you know, indicating that it includes district officers as well, it's not just board members, but most of the new addition to this policy is about that protocol. Does that make sense?
Yes.
And then the next one, which is related to this, and it is a new policy, and that policy is vacancies and unexpired term fulfillment. And it, this does have some things that are already in the RSA. So for example, if someone is, you know, resigns or dies or moves out of the district or whatnot in the middle of a session, that there's a process under the law about how you fill those positions. And whether, and typically what happens is that they're filled until the next opportunity for formal election. So like Heather's position, for example, I think initially she was, you were appointed, right, initially?
Yeah.
So she was appointed to fulfill someone else's term for that part of the term, and then at the next formal election, then she is eligible to run for, you know, for a term if she wanted to run. Sometimes people only fill a term and they don't have to run again, but. So that's what this policy is about. Just has some of those definitions that are, that are really governed by law, and you can see there's a lot of legal references to that one, that it sort of puts it all together in one spot. And we hadn't, for whatever reason, we hadn't had that policy before, and we always had to, we had to, you know, follow the law, but then you had to almost get legal advice about how to do it, because you're pulling it from about four or five different places. So this just kind of puts it all, puts it all together in one spot. Want to turn it over to you?
Sure. I mean, the next two, I mean, there was a bunch. So I guess I also should just note, I think we mentioned this at the last board meeting, the staff have done an incredible job of doing an audit of our policies and really identifying for the policy committee which ones need to be updated or revised, where we need new ones, that sort of thing. So I think, I guess I'll just note that, you know, we're, we're moving through quite a few policies tonight, because we're moving through the recommendations of that audit. So I'll do the next two, which are pretty straightforward. The first one is authorized signatures, and that's policy.
DGA.
DGA, thank you. So this is one that has been revised, and it's really just been, getting revised to give more structure to who should be signing documents on behalf of the district. So there's been some language updates on that one. And then the second policy is DK, which is payments, checks and manifests. And this is a new policy. And, you know, some of the policy was previously included in DGA, but this one provides additional guidance regarding protocols for dispersment of district monies. So the first, so those are, I don't know if there's much more to say there, but I think you all have read the policies. Does anyone have any questions about either of those? Me? Esther, since we have you and you've been so involved, if you might want to speak, we could come back to staff health, but do you want to speak on this suicide prevention and response? That was a, it's a pretty sizable and important one to...
Sure, thanks. So we looked at that policy. There was new legislation that required some elements that we didn't have in our other policy. So it's basically a new policy for us. We had some policies that spoke to suicide prevention, et cetera, but not a specific policy. So this is brand new. We, when I was reviewing it, and thank you Heather for assigning me all of these type of non-involved, low-risk policies. So we vetted it with all of our student support staff. I helped, Renee Bennett helped me. She vetted it with social workers. I vetted it with school counselors. We had Dr. Macy from the International Trauma Center take a look at it, to make sure that not only did we align with the law, but also did we have components that our experts felt were critical to have. And you saw those played out more in the backup documentation with forms and things that aligned to this policy. So I feel very comfortable with this policy. As I mentioned, we've been vetting it probably since September with a lot of our exports. And so I appreciate everyone's efforts on it, because it is a critical policy and really, really important to us as a SAU in each district. One great thing that is already in action as a result of this policy is now on all the student IDs, there is the suicide prevention line on their ID. So I think that's one, you know, immediate thing that's already currently occurring for our high school students, so that they have access to that anytime, anywhere really, as well as we continue to have our anonymous tip lines and things like that that also support this policy. So thanks to everyone who did the work. I appreciate it. It was a big, important process for us.
It's really comprehensive.
Sure, I mean, I can start these loads. So last one here is, it has the letters GB, G, A, so it's about staff health. And so this is not a new policy, but it just has some updates and some changes to it. The part about medical exams, although it's listed here as new language, some of that's already part of an RSA. It's just adopted into the policy that talks about that prior to employment, there's a requirement for a medical examination. The part that's really newer is this section here about return to work, and we had quite a bit of discussion about this, the policy committee did. And it essentially says that if you're out for more than consecutive, excuse me, seven consecutive school days, that you have to attest that you're fit to return to work. And it is something that, you know, we recognize that individual school districts or are working or units may do the collective bargaining process, negotiate something different. And if they do, then that sort of overrides what this policy says. You know, we, we recognize that part of it. But as a general standard, it's, you know, particularly if it doesn't speak to it. In some days, we did speak to, well, does it have to be from a doctor or a medical professional or these sort of things? And ultimately, we decided, no, we, you know, we trust the people that we work with and that they can attest that they're fit to return. They don't, we don't need to separately require them to make a medical appointment, particularly if it's times when they're busy, that might put them out of work for another couple of days. And we don't want that to happen. We want people to be able to come back when they're, when they know that they're ready, but they do need to attest that they're fit to be here. And I've said, I mean, really, that's, that was the discussion about that.
And I'll just add, I think that's both, you know, for the student's behalf, but also if there need to be accommodations made for someone to return, that there's clear communication around what coming back to school means for the employee as well.
And that's included in the policy. There's a, there's a reference to that too. I didn't read one. You're right, that's part of it. So some of these are new policies and some of these are changes. I mean, typically what we've had is our practice is that for the new policies, we haven't tried to approve them in the same meeting, right? We've had a reading and then approved them later. But certainly some of these are just, are just revisions, and we certainly could take a vote and approve some of them tonight.
I also just want to note that we're going to be moving through a lot of policies, like for the forthcoming board meetings. And so I wonder, open for discussion, if we don't have, if we're feeling comfortable as a board that there aren't any, that if you don't feel like you need more time to review, or you feel like the changes are pretty straightforward after reading them in preparation for board meetings, if we can move forward with a first read. Obviously, there's always the option for a second read if someone requests it, but I wonder, I'm just, I'm just aware that we may be moving through more, like, you know, quite a few more than we definitely had.
But these are definitely, these are first reading at least, that in a vote first reading, sometimes it can be the final reading.
That's what I'm suggesting.
But you're saying, you're saying that we don't have a first reading, we just go straight to just the final reading? I think the only thing I'm, so I think it's a good point. I mean, and I think most of these we probably can approve. I guess the, the only thing I'm, I don't know, I guess what I get concerned about is just that if someone wanted to come and give some feedback after they've heard us describe this, they'd have an opportunity to do it. But there's, but there's a lot of them on here. I mean, I would think, you're right, there's probably a combination of things. So the suicide one, for example, even though it's a new policy, I would think that that's something that's probably ready just to be approved. I mean, it's been vetted so much by so many committees and it worked out, and it's really just sort of putting protocol that's already been in place for a long time, or for a period of time. But even though it is a new policy, you know, technically we'd say we need a second read, I would agree with that policy, it just can prove.
It would mean, it would, I would think that we would go ahead and approve these as the final reading. They're relatively generic. If someone does take the time to watch us on television and come and give us some feedback, we can certainly consider it and go back to one of these versus keeping it in a holding pattern while we get an onslaught of more policies in the coming months. That would be just keep things moving along. You know, like you said, the most complex one, the suicide prevention, has been fully vetted and reviewed by everyone invested in this SAU, so I think, you know, that makes sense. And that would be the only one I would pause on actually.
I can't remember if we have a policy that, I know that Co-op does, I can't remember if we have a policy that says that we have to have a first reading and a second reading, that, that we would have to suspend that policy or not.
I'm going to ask Heather, I see you're at a computer. I don't recall that, but Heather can double check for us on her computer. I know that by law, we're not required to, but if we have a policy, we can certainly suspend that policy. That's what the board chose to.
I just want to make sure we go about it the right way.
Yeah. So Heather is vigorously examining her policy.
While Heather is vigorously examining that, does anyone have any questions about the policies?
No, that's an exorbitant amount of work, and thank you guys for being a part of that.
Yeah, I just want to underscore too how helpful it was to have that tool that Andreas mentioned, you know, to look through these, and it was explained to us that the staff are using it in their first read and review of these, and then the policy committee as well, to make sure that we're really just being mindful of how these policies can affect all the people involved in our school communities. So it's a great, it's a great tool.
Can I just, can I just propose something now? We're going, I think we have, what is it, six policies that we have in front of us here?
One, two, three, six. Yeah, six.
Can I propose that, or ask that we maybe just keep one for a second reading, which is the staff health policy? Just because I think that's one that, that has, I just want to make sure that staff doesn't feel that, you know, even though it's listed, it's just a revision, and technically we do have that, there's, there's enough pieces in there that were changed, that if someone did have something, just want to give them an opportunity. We wouldn't really have to discuss it much next meeting. If there's, we don't get any feedback over the next month, we just, you know, approve it. But then have that one be one that we hold for a second reading.
Heather, I'm just looking to you if you found anything?
I haven't found anything yet.
Yeah, I don't believe there is policy that you have to do a second read.
Great, yeah. So I'd make a, I'd make a motion that we approve the five policies that, what is it here? BBC, BBBE, DGA, DK and JLDBB. That we approve those tonight, the other revisions or new policies that were there, those five policies.
I'll second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. I will put the staff health amongst the other multitude of policies coming to you next month.
Okay, so new business was all about policy, and then we have old business. I don't have anything there. Does anyone have anything they'd like to bring up?
I just had a question, maybe for Beth and Deanna, if there was any update on how the projects are proceeding from the Will Wright funds.
Clearly, they're right in there.
Oh, great.
That's great. That's great.
The cart, the cart to the?
The cart, and you can really drag that. You want to take a look?
It's awesome.
But the other one was going to have some work done on.
Oh, right. Yeah.
That's great. That's awesome. Thanks. That's great to hear.
Kids want?
I do want to, I do want to make a motion before we close, if we've covered other things, which is a motion to go into non-public session?
Yes.
So I wanted to make a motion that we have a non-public session under RC 91A32C, which would be, yeah, matters of discussed in public would likely adversely affect the reputation of any person other than a member of the board.
Okay. Okay. He's not aware of the other issue. Okay. But they can both be under C. So we have to do a roll call vote, or we have to have a second?
We have to have a second first.
A second?
And then an individual roll call vote.
Okay. Patty Saret, Suicide drinker.
Heather Eichmeyer?
Patrick DeAy.
Okay, the time is now 7:30, and we will be entering non-public. Thank you for your attendance. We will come out of non-public and close out this meeting. Exeter School Board is now exiting non-public session at 9:00 PM, and we will also be adjourning our regular scheduled meeting at 9:00 PM as well.